I call the meeting to order of the Select Board for Monday, November 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Carver Middle High School Auditorium. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to read the community prayer?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment to this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve and that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you. It's now time for citizens' participation. This is the time when we allow citizens to come up and tell us what they'd like to tell us. We do ask that you limit what you have to say to three minutes. Is there anyone here who wishes to participate? No one? I'm sorry? Okay, so this, I'll try to speak into the microphone better. Is that better? So this is the time for citizens' participation in which we, the Select Board allows citizens to come up and speak into the microphone and tell us an issue or concern they may be having. We would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here interested in citizens' participation? There being no movement to the microphone. Did you understand me that time? No, I'm talking about citizens' participation. Okay, so we need to wait until 7:10 to open the poll hearing. Mr. LaFond, is the chief going to be here for a discussion on the next item?
No, he's not. In summary, the Moonrise Cinema has opted not to use the four one-day special licenses that this board has approved. That being the case, it would seem wise for the board simply to vote to rescind those one-day licenses.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Townsend.
I make a motion that we rescind the approval of the four one-day licenses previously granted.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Licenses are rescinded. Mr. LaFond, could you just in 30 seconds explain to the public why they are rescinded?
Well, the police chief did have some concerns about people possibly drinking in their vehicles, but having spoken to the chief and as has Elaine, and also with the proprietors of Moonrise, they informed us that they're actually not, opted not to use the licenses. So with any license issued by this board, if the authority is not using them, whether it's a common victula or any other type of license, the license should not stand. So this is just an example of that. And where their licenses are not being used, they're not intended to be used, it's best not to leave licenses out there.
Great, thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Just a second, Mr. Belvin. So do you think, Mr. Belvin, you and Mr. LaFond could give us the update within the next 10 minutes?
I was actually gonna say-
Next five minutes, sorry.
I was gonna say, why don't we just get over the minutes and request for fishing tournaments? And that should probably bring us right to that timeframe.
That is an excellent idea. Okay, moving to the last few items. Is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September 8th, 2020?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Chair, on-
Mrs. Bogart.
One, two. Oh, the motion to adjourn. As much as Mark's awesome, I don't think he could motion and second it. I don't know who did. I just don't think he did both.
Okay. So would you like to table those minutes until that, we figure that out?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. I'll entertain the motion to approve the minutes of October 6th, 2020.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Bogart.
It says it was meeting room one. Wasn't this the meeting we had here right before town meeting?
I actually don't recall where we met. So there's another one. Would you like that tabled?
Yes.
No, that was the one that was-
Because it was a seven-minute meeting. I think it was here right before town meeting.
No, that was the 15th.
Yeah, October 15th.
We're voting on October 6th?
Oh, my bad, okay. I take it back.
That's all right. So there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October 6th. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Minutes of October 15th, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to restate my discussion from the last set of minutes.
Okay, where does it say we met?
Says we met at meeting room one, and I believe we met here.
Okay, is that motion and second include this amendment?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Motion and a second to approve. Actually, I have to say that I have not looked at this last set of minutes. So I'd like to, I'd entertain a motion to table that one as well.
Make a motion to table, as you know.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I guess since, again, that one says meeting room one, and I think we met via Zoom.
We did.
Okay. Very good. All in favor of tabling with that? Well, we can't make the amendment, but all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to table is approved. Okay, we have one minute. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve all of these fishing tournaments, or do you-
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chair, you guys are gonna hate me. The one on, for June 6th, 2021, it's the only one of all of them that didn't list number of people expected to attend and number of cars. Is that mandatory on there? Because it just jumped out, it was the only one that didn't have that.
Mr. LaFond?
Actually, I'm not sure what your history is. There's certainly nothing mandatory about it unless it's a, you know, a liquor license or something to that effect. So again, I'm not sure what your history is with these licenses, but it's not mandatory.
Okay, just an observation.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Mrs. Weston? Mrs. Weston? Did you have a comment?
I'm sorry. Yeah, they have to pay per trailer, so it could be they're not sure how many people they have yet, and they'll let us know closer to the event.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay. All right, motion is made to approve all the fishing tournaments. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved unanimously. Okay, it is now 7:10, and we are now going to the poll hearing. Let me first read the notice to abutters. In conformity with the requirements of Section 22 of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing has been scheduled at, it's scratched out, the Carver Auditorium, High School Auditorium, on the 17th day of November 2020 at 7:10 PM upon the petition of N-Star Electric Company, DBA, Eversource Energy, and Verizon New England for permission to locate and relocate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way or ways. Number one, Pope's Point Road. Is there anyone here representing the petitioner? Thank you. Could you come forward, Mr. LaFond has a microphone? If you could state your name and affiliation?
Good evening, my name is Donna-
Can you speak up? It's really hard to hear with these masks.
I'm sorry, Donna Howarth from Eversource. Is that better?
Yes.
Petitioning for the pole relocation and actually the new pole being installed down by Cross Street to accommodate the new primary cable that they'll be running from poles three to seven.
I'm sorry?
The new primary cable that they'll be running from pole numbers three through seven.
Okay. Do we, did we get the abutter notification cards, Elaine?
Those aren't required. It's written abutters notice, not every turn and peak.
Very well. Are there any abutters here that wish to be heard? Sir, if you could come up and take this microphone, state your name and address and your concern or issue?
I'm Larry Hardju, Hardju Brothers Cranberries. We own the corner there. And I was wondering why the new pole, are they taking the pole out of the island that's in the middle of where Cross Street meets Pope's Point? What, it's like a brand-new pole, one of those with the green pressure treating in it? But anyway, I haven't been contacted at all other than by this mail. And we see the, there's stakes in the ground on two sides of our driveway, and I would like to meet with whoever's gonna do it. I'm really not against anybody putting poles, but I want to know where they're located. If we try to come out of there with a trailer load of cranberries, you know, I don't want to have to drive up on Mr. Fermental's lawn or something to be able to make the swing. And, because there's plenty of room there. And I don't know if it involves cutting down any trees or anything. There's a big spruce tree there. You know, I'm not against public works. But I also see it's gonna be shared with N-Star and Verizon. And I'm not particularly in love with Verizon right now because two years ago, just a little bit further down the street where Montron's house is, we had one of our trailers, Reefer Trailer, with a load of cranberry vines in it, and it hit a wire and ripped it down. And it caused some damage, I guess, to the hookup. But they have been hounding us. They want $17,000 to fix that, and I refuse to pay it. The law requires that wires be a minimum of 16 feet of clearance on a road, and our truck's only 13 and a half feet tall. But they have been having harassing phone calls and sending letters. I finally got a lawyer working on it, but I don't want to spend too much money. I'm really not into doing Verizon any big favors. But they can probably get it anyway because they're a utility. But that's my beef, and it's been like three years, and they just keep up like a bunch of pit bulls. So I'm not gonna pay $17,000 for somebody that's got a, you see their trucks at the coffee shop all the time and everything. They'll have them go out and check the wires instead of drinking coffee, that's what I say.
Why, I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Hardju. Is there anyone here from Verizon? No? Ma'am, I'm sorry, you'll have to speak into the microphone.
I can try to explain to you why Verizon is on this petition. Most of the poles on that street, Pope's Point Road, they are considered joint-owned, meaning that Verizon owns half the pole and Eversource owns the other half. So that's the reason Verizon is on the petition. We need to include them in order for them to attach to those poles so they can relocate their cables down the street, the road. So the one pole is just being relocated from where it is, I can show you on here, approximately 10 feet. And the new pole that's being installed, okay, is because the span is so long between pole five and seven, they need to install pole six so the span isn't so long.
I'd like to just request to have a representative from the company, you'd be out here, and we can go over it. If you're gonna move it a couple feet either way, that would be beneficial to me, you know, and I don't think it'd make that much difference.
Okay, I will contact-
You know, we do use N-Star, Spreeno, so they're on the cross street, speeds up the cross street. All the pumps and the other stuff on the other side is Middleboro, so that's Littleboro Gas and Electric.
I believe so.
Yeah, so it says right where the two come together there. Like I said, I'm not against the utility. Everybody needs utility, and I just got a beef with Verizon there.
I'm going to get your name and number so that I can refer this to the engineer, and someone will be in touch with you and hopefully set something up to meet you out there to go over this. Yep?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Belvin.
I just have a question. Is, if we hold off on this poll hearing, in case you guys want to readjust where the polls will be, is that gonna hurt you guys or to come back in a week or two after you've talked to one of the abutters and possibly make a change to this if you need it? Would a week or two matter?
They'll have to redesign the job first, depending, I just handle the rights, I don't do the design.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're gonna have to speak up.
I don't handle the designing of the jobs, just the rights. So if someone from Eversource meets this gentleman out in the field and they decide to relocate them, it may be a new petition that has to be submitted. I don't, you know, maybe the pole that's being relocated won't be a problem, and maybe the one, the new pole that we're petitioning for, if it's only a matter of a couple of feet, I don't know if we would have to submit a new petition or we could just use the one we have.
We can continue the public hearing.
Okay.
Yes.
We can continue the public hearing.
Okay.
Is that the wish of the board?
Can I?
Mrs. Bogart? Could you speak into the mic, Mrs. Bogart?
I have a question. On, on the map you gave us, proposed pole 15 over six is south of the road on this map, but I had noticed a stake other, on the other side of the road, which I'm assuming is one of the one that the gentleman mentioned, at the side of his driveway. So is the pole going where the stake is or where it's located on the map?
The pole should be going where it's located on the map. And actually, I rode by last week to look at it, and I could not find that stake. I could only find the stake for the pole that's being relocated in front of, I believe it was house number three.
Because earlier today, there was a stake to the side of what I'm assuming is, is your driveway on this map, if you can confirm. There is a stake where I've drawn my little dot, so-
Okay. We went by last Thursday, and there was nothing there, and I actually sent an email to the designer to please stake that and let me know when it was done, but I didn't hear from him. So I assumed maybe he was on vacation, but it's possible he did it. I'd have to take a ride and look.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing until the next Select Board here.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Jim. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hardju.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, from, you too, thank you. Okay, I think we're still on schedule here. Mr. Belvin and Mr. LaFond, if you could give us an update, please, on the town of Wareham's withdrawal from the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District and on all other solid waste recycling issues, options, including the transfer station and including the agreement allowing Carver to use the transfer station.
Just real quick to interrupt?
Yes.
I think it's important to know that the next scheduled meeting of the board is next December 1st.
So that, that hearing will be continued to December 1st?
Right, exactly.
Thank you, Rick. Mr. Hardju and the lady from, from Eversource, the meeting, the hearing's gonna be continued to December the 1st at 7:00 PM. And we're probably gonna be meeting here again, but we will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to start us off with this? We're at a brisk pace here, so, Mr. Belvin, Mr. LaFond, who wants to go first?
I'm confident that Bob can handle it all by himself.
Okay, Bob, you've got 10 minutes.
Very, very confident, Bob.
The last meeting we had at the district, an agreement was reached with the town of Wareham that they will run the transfer station at Route 28. They will have complete control of it. Carver, in that agreement, is an automatic user of that transfer station, meaning that any resident can purchase a transfer station sticker from Wareham and have to comply with all their rules and regulations that they have pertaining to the transfer station. In return for that, the town of Wareham will pay $120 a year. This contract is for a year with a six-month extension. Since it's benefiting both towns, and if everything goes as planned with the district, that Marion will leave the district at the beginning of the year. They will run the Benson Brook Station, and they will, Marion will only be allowed to use the Benson Brook Station. So the only option for a transfer station for Carver is the Route 28 facility. So that being said, it's really good. It wasn't just me persevering for this. Rick attended meetings too. So I'd like to thank him for this, and I want to especially thank the town of Wareham for taking on this responsibility. So I'm happy with that. The other thing is, and I'm gonna pass these down if I could, I know that there was talk before about-
Did you take one?
Yeah, the town of Plymouth allowing Carver to utilize their transfer station. And I reached out to the town of Plymouth to find out where that was at, and I know we asked Rick to do this, but I just wanted a different station, and I got the emails here, and unfortunately, on March 27th, the Plymouth Board of Selectmen doesn't want to allow Carver to utilize their transfer station. So there's an email thread with that. I put this in the record, just to let people know that had this not worked out, we'd kind of be up a creek without a paddle, but I'm so happy we are in a position that we have a transfer station and an option. So thank you, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin.
Have a question.
Mr. Hoffman.
Sure. Mr. Belvin, do you know why-
Can you bring the microphone a little closer there, Jim? Sorry.
Bob, do you know why the Select Board changed their mind and now left Carver residents?
I do not. The town administrator did not state a reason for it. Like I said, the email thread that's here, that's all I received from them. But it just says, "In light of everything happening, is it going to screw you up too much if the town of Plymouth Select Board doesn't allow Carver residents to use the transfer station? Let me know." And the reply to that was, I'll leave that out. Given where everything is at, I understand. I'll just put it that way. There's other stuff in here.
Was that part of what we just received?
What?
Yeah, it's on page two, at the bottom.
That's the second page.
So these emails, read, the first ones on the first page, and then the response, and then the response to that.
Yeah, so the original agreement that Plymouth was looking at was $250 plus the buying of their orange bags. That was the original agreement, so.
And just to add, having spoken to Mike Milonowski about this, he did tell me that it was basically a verbal agreement between he and Melissa Reggie, the town manager in Plymouth. So there was never anything in writing, there was never any agreement other than a kind of a verbal agreement between colleagues, which, as you can see, ended up not materializing.
Actually, I kind of disagree, Mr. LaFond, because on this first, when I sent this out for my public request, from their actual, the town of Selectmen for Plymouth, it says number six, Carver residents using Plymouth transfer station. The DBW director and I met with the Carver town administrator this week to discuss potential for a town of amendment transfer station to be used by Carver residents. This is an issue that arose at the last Finance Committee meeting, I would suspect from theirs. We indicated we would be recommending a fee to Carver for $250 and the necessity of participating in buying the orange bags. We thought this, we would try this option for a year and see how it goes. So I mean, that's what was the first brought to them. So the Board of Selectmen did know about it, and it was discussed at their meeting. And like I said, I don't know if there was any written agreement, formalized, because it didn't get brought to our Board of Selectmen here for an agreement, but it's clear that they did discuss it, and it wasn't until, that was March 5th, until March 27th, when they finally said that we not do it.
Yeah, I think Mr. LaFond was saying there was no written agreement, is that correct, Mrs. Weston?
Correct, and that was, I inquired of Mr. Milonowski what his recollections were, and he did inform me, there was nothing in writing, and it was, and again, perhaps it was beyond the town manager, Bob, beyond that their, I guess, collegial agreement. But be that as it may, there was never anything that was commemorated in an agreement between the towns.
Okay, great, thank you both so much. Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. LaFond, do you know why this agreement was stopped?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if had it, perhaps if the Plymouth Board was more amenable, but I don't know why. Mike didn't tell me why it never got to that level, why it was never culminated in an agreement.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sarah? Excuse me, one more, just really quick.
Real quick, Bob, we're on a roll here.
Did you pull the public records from Mike's files, Rick, for this issue?
We don't, I mean, we don't have a record of any agreement in our office.
No, 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 I meant just the emails or anything that he discussed or anything prior to?
I haven't looked.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't know what exists.
Thank you.
And if I could just, you know, back to the good news real quick, one of the things that Bob had mentioned is that in the agreement with the district directly, within the town of Marion's lease agreement, Carver has a right to participate. It's not up to Wareham whether or not we do that. So the agreement that they have with the district to lease it specifically, not just allows, but if Carver wishes to participate, Carver residents, you know, by right can participate. It's not up to Wareham.
Madam Chair, just one quick question.
Yes, Mr. Townsend.
Do we have, I know it's maybe it's a little early for this, but do we have any indication of a price for Carver residents using the transfer station?
We don't. The board is actually meeting tomorrow night, 5 o'clock. Whether or not that's, I don't know if Bob has any further information, I don't get if that's forthcoming.
So since the lease agreements with the district and Wareham, it's up to Wareham to decide how much- to decide how much the fees will be. So, it'll be up to the Wareham Board of Selectmen to determine how much the fees are going to be to their residents, and Carver will have to pay that also.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Okay, moving along to discussion of possible vote on membership and appointing authorities for town boards and committees. I don't know if you have anything written up about this, Rick, in a draft form.
No, I don't know specifically what this refers to.
This is, this is the...
I didn't raise this issue. I mean, I know with regard to the Finance Committee and Board of...
Right. No, this is different. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I believe this is the discussion as to membership on numerous boards at the same time. And I know we had a discussion on this in an earlier meeting. I would like someone, I would be willing to entertain a motion, which I think will solve a lot of the problems here, a motion that goes something like this, that if a person is a member of a permitting authority, then they cannot be a member of another permitting authority. Because I think that's where the perceived conflicts come in, and I don't mean financial conflicts, but other types of perceived conflicts. I think that if someone is a member of a permitting authority, but they're also a member of another committee, it's not a permitting authority. To me personally, I don't have an issue with that. It's someone serving on, just repeating myself, one permitting authority and then another permitting authority that I think is the issue. So, just to get this off to a rolling start, I would entertain that motion from someone if someone so chooses.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Any further discussion?
Can I? I'm sorry.
Mr. LaFond.
Well, I'll wait till the end, but I do think this would require a bylaw change.
Correct, it would. And so, if people, if this board agrees that they would like to see that changed, then I guess that would be a direction for you and Town Council to come up with a, either an amended bylaw, if there's anything like it in our bylaws now or a brand-new one. Okay.
Yeah, no.
Mr. Belbin.
No, actually, go ahead. Jim, you were first.
Jim, you go first.
Just a quick question. As we discussed this further, can we actually identify those committees that are permit, so people will know exactly which ones, if they are on that committee, they can't be on others?
So, and anyone correct me if I have left one out, but we are ourselves a permitting authority. We don't issue, you know, building land use permits, but we do issue types of permits. So, it was the Select Board, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Zoning Board.
I'd say earth removal.
Earth removal. What else? Who else issued? The Community Preservation Committee does not issue permits. They issue recommendations, so that would not count. And this is a separate discussion from the Finance Committee discussion, which we'll be having later. So, I think you'll see that the proposal for that says basically, if you're on the Finance Committee, you really, you can't be on anything else, period, because everyone has a budget, whether you're the Recreation Committee or earth removal or anything. So, I believe those are all the permitting, and that's not true. Historic District Commission is a permitting authority. Well, we will research that, and this would, if we had a bylaw change, this would apply to all those. And you're right, we should probably list all those. It's a very good point.
Perfect, thank you.
So...
Mr. Belbin.
Yes. That was actually my notes that I actually wrote here. Is this a bylaw or a policy change? It's good to know it's a bylaw change. That's going to go before the whole town.
Correct.
So, some of these are elected positions and some are appointed.
Mm-hmm.
My question is, is that do we treat them all the same way, or do we turn around and say, "Okay, you can be one elected and one appointed," or just period, cut and dry? That's something that will have to be discussed.
Well, that's a very good subtle point, Mr. Belbin. So, I would add that to the motion that I just entertained, that I think it's regardless of whether you're appointed or elected, that the same, the same theory still holds true.
Okay.
If you're a member of a permitting authority, no matter how you got there, it would seem to be somehow conflicting with being a member of another permitting authority. Right.
Okay, I have one other one, is that some of, I'm not sure with the Earth Removal Committee or the Historic District Committee, but do they have set requirements of having one person from the, just one person from the Select Board, one person from Concom, one person from...
No. No, the only committee that does that, I believe, is the Community Preservation Committee, and that's required by state law.
Right. So, I just want to make sure that that's not included in this, so we don't kind of get some frazzles.
And that's, I'm glad you brought that up, too, because again, CPC is not a permitting authority per se. They make recommendations, but that's... Good point. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Townsend.
I understand why we may be looking at something like this, but personally, I'd like to get some input from some of these permitting authorities before we take any action on this. So, I personally would like to see a meeting where we invite them in and include them in the meeting before we take any action.
I'm willing to do that, Mr. Townsend, but this is not the first time this has been on the agenda. And, you know, this is a big venue. We could have entertained...
I understand, but I just think...
Pretty much all of them in here.
I just think it would be a good idea to specifically reach out to them and invite them to our meeting before we take any action on this.
Well, why don't we do that, if that's what the board wishes? We could put this on the next agenda one more time, reach out to the various permitting authorities, and ask them to send a member, perhaps, to our next meeting. Mrs. Bogart?
I, I think what you're saying is good, because at the next meeting, we can have that official wording with the committees and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So, then we can take action on it then, and, you know, they can come. So, but I think for the next time to have official wording is great, and then...
Okay, so there was a motion and a second on the table. Has that been withdrawn? Mr. Belbin?
Actually, yeah, to, because I, I think that some of this, that discussion that we're having now, the A-10 discussion there, actually comes into play that if we created a subcommittee for this type of thing, the deal with our bylaws or whatnot, it's a different venue than just the Board of Selectmen inviting them in. Now, they're part of the whole scheme of things that we actually looking for it. So, like I said, I'll withdraw my motion now for that.
Okay, so what I'm looking for now is a motion to continue this discussion at our next meeting. And at that next meeting, we'll have a draft bylaw, and we will have invited a member from each permitting authority to talk, to talk with us about this. Is that...
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Hoffman made the motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just quickly, if we're going to have a draft bylaw at the next meeting, I think we should make a best effort to get that draft bylaw out to everybody in advance, so they have a chance to review it, and then...
Absolutely.
Especially the members of the various, you know, the other boards and committees that are going to be here.
Absolutely. Mr. LaFond, did that give you enough time for that draft?
Yes, I will make sure we get that out in a timely manner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. So, that will be at our 12-1-2020 meeting. Okay. Next is the discussion of possible vote on host community agreement for Cape Way Cannabis Incorporated.
Madam Chair, I don't like this line thing. I can't see you guys. We're all looking at each other, like, "Hey, down here." We didn't address anything about the appointing authorities for town boards and committees in that last item. We just talked about membership.
Excuse me?
The last item, it said discussion of possible vote on membership and appointing authorities. We never talked about appointing authorities. We only talked about the membership of the committees.
So, that, if someone's elected, we know who the appointing authority is. It's the general public. If someone's appointed, that's in our town bylaws. Sometimes it's the Board of Selectmen, some Select Board, sometimes it's the town administrator. So, is there someone, does someone want to start off that discussion?
Well, as I had brought up, this, I think this started as one of my Select Board member notes way back in the day. And I would like us to have a conversation about who appoints every, for appointed town boards and committees, I'd like to revisit who does that, because in my opinion, I don't think the town administrator should be able to fully appoint any board or committee. I don't think, I don't think one person, no matter who that is, should be able to appoint an entire committee.
Okay, so to that point, that is in the legislation, that enables the strong town administrator to be able to do that? So, that would, we would have to take this up at another meeting, I think, Jen, because that's quite a topic?
Okay, then I think I would like to do that.
I would just point out to that point that this board has veto authority over any appointments of the town administrator.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. LaFond. Yes, when Mr. LaFond makes an appointment, he lets us know, and we have 15 days to veto that appointment. So, it's not, I mean, just to your point, I don't know if it makes you feel any better, but it's not like he can just do it and we can't do anything about it. We can.
Yeah.
Okay.
But in my opinion, we should have, we should be there from the front for some of them. I would like to have a discussion about that in the future, if we're not talking about it now.
Is everyone amenable to a future discussion?
Yes.
You guys? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Discussion of possible vote on host community agreement for Cape Way Cannabis Incorporated. Mr. LaFond?
Yes, in your packet, you'll have two documents. One is the so-called Red Line version, provided by Town Council, which highlights the changes from the draft that was, you received at the last meeting. And also attached is the clean copy, which reflects those changes. I know the, some of the points that were raised with the five-year agreement that was voted, it's a separate, specific vote by the board. I have spoken to the proponent, and they are amenable to adding the $5,000 that had been requested. You'll see that in there.
Okay. That's great.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, but I have the Red Line, but the, but...
I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry. Apparently, the, the clean copy that reflects the Red Line version is not in the packet.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. So, but, but those are, those are the, the basic changes, plus being cleaned up the language, as had been requested by the board.
That's terrific. So, they accepted the...
Yes.
Request for $5,000. Could you also, when you give us a clean copy, make Select Board two words?
I'd be happy to do that, yes.
Thank you.
And presuming you do vote this, we'll have it in the office for your signature in the next couple of days.
Excellent. Is there a motion to approve the host community agreement for Cape Way Cannabis?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Belbin.
No, first. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, just one thing on this thing, because I'm the grammar person. On page 10, or wait, maybe it was, yes, on page 10, under section 21 nullity, second line, establishment is spelled all wonky and has a one in it?
Well, that's probably because it was converted from PDF to Word. That happens sometimes.
Okay, well, that's like that. But, but at our last meeting via Zoom, I had asked that we not take a vote, so specifically, I could take more time to look into other towns' host community agreements and see what I could find. And I have done that, and I was doing it late last night and all the way up to our meeting time today. And I wish I could give you guys copies of this, but in my opinion, we should not vote on this tonight at all, because I have found several towns, one of which is the town of Berlin, they have something called a marijuana host agreement application procedure, where they have an entire procedure of what to do. And they took it in in November 2019, you know, for the Select Board to consider negotiating and executing a final host community agreement for a prospective marijuana license establishment in Berlin, the following tasks must be completed. So, it's, you know, contact the building commissioner for preliminary review, then schedule an appointment on a Select Board meeting agenda to make an introductory presentation to the board, then publicize a community outreach meeting to discuss stuff, then submit more stuff back to the Planning Board and go through the zoning reviews. There were multiple towns that had stuff like that. A lot of towns had actual applications that the marijuana establishments have to fill out, that tell you, you know, they ask for your background, for your business expertise, if you're, if you're, if you have an interest in any other marijuana businesses in town. I mean, one of them is 14 pages long. Like I said, if, I would love to pass this out to you guys. I don't have copies. But it shows a lot of towns, if, it seems like a lot of towns are treating this like a host community agreement. Before you vote to let someone in your home, in your town, you get to know who they are. And all, all we know, at least all I know about them right now, based on what we were given, is that they're called Cape Way Cannabis. They want to do something at 307 Tremont, and they've already approached the Planning Board. I don't know enough about them to feel comfortable approving a host community agreement after having found out other towns have done more. This is new to us. I was inspired to find that other towns took this initiative to have such a thorough process to understand what was, what was being proposed in their town, and they had a full understanding. Because, because a host community agreement is more than just a financial agreement. At the meeting last time, I don't know the exact words, but it was said, you know, "This is basically just the finances and its standard." This was copy and paste from somewhere else. Well, the agreement in front of us is literally the agreement that Alfred's Finest has with Plymouth. And I think it's great that it worked for Plymouth, but maybe we shouldn't just take what worked for them, change some words, and say, "Okay, it works for us." I think we should spend more time on this, to be given something and just sign away for something so important. I just think we need more time, and I think we should have the applicant come before us for a presentation before we vote at all. And I would love to send you guys this information. I just didn't before this meeting, so you could, you could see and understand what I was looking at.
Mr. LaFond, would you like to address Jen's concern?
Well, I think a couple of things. This agreement is essentially a boilerplate agreement, as Council has, has informed you. I would also suggest that regardless of the application process, a board has limited ability. Certainly, if you'd like to know more about an applicant, that's one thing. But the board doesn't necessarily have the ability to, to not issue a host community agreement to a company that is, has met the zoning requirements. It's, it's, it's nice to know that there's, that, you know, I guess it's nice if you'd like to get to know the applicant a little bit more, but to the extent that you have the ability to deny a host community agreement to a company that meets the requirements of the town zoning, I mean, you don't have the ability to get into and make a judgment based upon, you know, the business model or, or their marketing strategies or those types of things. The state, you know, has license requirements through the CCC, and it's really not, other than the special, the permitting process through the Planning Board, they're really, it, each city or town doesn't have a tremendous amount of latitude when it comes to the host community agreement itself. That's all. So, certainly to the extent you'd like to, you know, have a conversation with them, that's, that's, that's fine. I would also, I would say, though, that in good faith, this company was told over a year ago how to pursue this process. That was not pursued in the way that is prescribed by law, and these people have been, really been on hold for many, many months, if not almost a year now. So, so I think in, in good faith, this applicant has been put off by the town for various reasons, and now we find ourselves in a situation where we're kind of straightening out the permitting process, as it's supposed to start with this board. Had it started with this board a year ago, when it probably should have, I think you had a different situation. But now we have a company that has put a tremendous amount of resources into... But now we have a company that has put a tremendous amount of resources into this project. I think they've, they've even, you know, bought some property. They've met with, they've dealt with conservation, uh, commission requirements. So I think this is a time when it may be something you wouldn't look at for, for another applicant. But, but I think this is a unique situation based upon the way it's been handled from day one, uh, which is nothing that any of the members, either me or any member of this board had anything to say or do with. But I do think it's a matter of good faith at this point. So that, that's my thought. Not that the, um, concerns or the, uh, the issues that raised by Jen are very valid, but I think we kind of are where we are right now and the agreement itself is, you know, a, uh, if they are fairly standard, this is more basically, um, the top of the ladder right now in terms of the benefits. And as you can see, should there be a more, you know, a greater benefit provided to any other community, this, uh, this agreement reflects that the town will also have, be able to, you know, that automatically becomes part of the town's agreement. So it's a good contract. Um, it's basically the top of the ladder right now. And again, I just think Jen's points are very valid, but I think we've got a good faith issue here too.
Yeah. So you're saying too that, um, specifically the town cannot deny this agreement simply because, for example, we may not like their, someone's business practice or, and as long as they're following zoning and state law, we essentially have got a pretty good deal here?
Yeah, I think the, the problem becomes when it appears that, you know, when you're trying to pick and choose, you only have limited licenses. And, you know, you get into issues of, how do, how do I say this? Um, it can appear perhaps that there may be some, um,
Prejudice?
Yes, I think that's the right, the right word. In terms of picking and choosing your, um, which vendor you think would be better for the town. I know in a prior experience, having discussed this with town council, having had, you know, more applications than we had available, you know, we decided that it would be, um, it to comply with any, with the law in a way that would not put the town in any, you know, jeopardy for just that type of, of accusation, that we simply take them in the order that they were received, the request to negotiate a host community agreement. And as I said, you know, the limitations of the, of the town are significant. And for the sake of argument, let's say, um, this company, uh, comes in, they, they make a presentation, but they meet all the requirements. I don't think, I think it would be very difficult for the board, uh, to deny a host community agreement for a, for a company that has, that is lawfully in front of you. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but I know that that becomes a very difficult situation.
Correct.
That doesn't mean I don't agree, um, that if this is a process that the board wanted to follow going forward, I, I think that's fine. But as I said, your ability to deny a host community agreement, I, I would suggest is very limited.
Thank you, Mr. LeFond. Let me ask, is there someone from the audience here representing the applicant? Sir, could you come forward and use the microphone, please, and state your name and, um, Rick, do we have a microphone down there for him?
My name's Kevin Howe with Cape Way Cannabis.
You'll have to speak right into that mic, yeah.
We actually started this process with the town of Carver over two years ago. When Stephen Cole was here, I think Jen, you were on the board of the planning board when they were putting the zoning in. We went and met in front of the planning board and helped create and talk to them and give them some resources on the zoning. So this isn't something new that we're just coming down the road and just jumping into this with the town of Carver. We've been going through this and when Steve left, we initiated our contacts with Jim and we were doing as the previous town administrator had instructed us to do. Um, we come here today because we're, we've been following the path we've been told, told to follow. Which was get, get your special permit from the planning board first. And then, you know, in the process, we'll get the hosting agreement and we'll go from there. So that, we're here because this is how we've been instructed to do it. Um, not that we've been trying to avoid you, not tell you who we are. We've asked on several occasions to be able to come and, and talk to the community and talk to the town about it. But we've just, this is the way we've been told to do it. We're a locally based company. Um, we're minority owned. Michelle Howe is our president. She sits up in the back there.
Thank you.
As far as being involved in these in the past, because of the limit to having only three per ownership, um, I've done some consulting and some other ones and been involved in some other projects and that's where our, our knowledge comes from. We were in front of your zoning board a year ago. And when, uh, you're ZBA, and when that didn't work, we decided to try to take a different route and we have purchased a piece of property down there in order to put this into the area that you zoned it for. We are well over millions of dollars involved in this program. This isn't something we're just trying to throw together with some shoestrings or anything else. Um, we're fully funded and like I said, we've been at this for a while.
Thank you, sir. Did you, did you get your name into the?
My name is Kevin Howe, H-O-U-G-H.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Sarah?
Mr. Belbin?
Yeah, see, um, this has nothing really to do with you or your company. I just want to make this clear to you. Okay, it has nothing. It has to do with a process that I feel should have been done before, is that you come before the board of selectmen, like I said, not against you. Though I want to make it clear, there's nothing against you or your company at all. Is that my feeling is the process should have been that the company come before the board of selectmen. We talked to them, we create a host agreement and say, okay, your next process is to go through planning this, find a property, planning, zoning, whatever it needs, conservation, go through that process afterwards. We can't do it at this time. Okay, we know that. Okay, and I totally agree with what Rick has already said about this. All right. Um, I wish it was done better, but it wasn't. Nothing against you guys. Okay, um, so I think that what we have here personally is a, a good agreement. But going forward, I think we need to go forward and have a clear-cut process on how companies come into this town, all right, and navigate through our town and our different boards, committees and commissions. And it has to be set in place that this is how it's done. Because if it's not done that way, then when you find out in the newspaper that, oh my God, I'm looking at the, the notices that this company's going to conservation and the board of selectmen didn't know anything about it. That's how I found out. And like I said, it's nothing against you guys. Nothing at all.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Belbin.
We, we want you to know that we're here to partner with the community and that's what these end up becoming, is a partnership with the community.
Yes.
I'm going to tell you, like I said, over two years ago, when I started this project with Steve Cole, we, we, you know, asked at that time, you know, when's the right time, when's the right time? And we've been asking ever since.
Yeah.
Um, we're, we're, you know, we have a full presentation that we're putting on December 9th in front of our planning. Um, Mr. LeFond can tell you, our, our project application is 187 pages we've put together for you. We've been very thorough. We've spent the, the right amount of time. We met last week with your, um, different department heads, fire, police, board of health and so forth, addressed any concerns that they had. Um, we're here, we're trying to give you all the information we can give you. We, in the past, haven't had the, been given the opportunity. This is all I can say.
No, and I, I appreciate that and I think the board appreciates that. We, we can't, I feel we can't, go back and sort of redo this at this point. It would not be fair to the applicant. But maybe moving forward, it's a discussion we might want to have.
Right, I was going to say, you have one other license left and if, and if we wanted to use, uh, you know, Jen's suggestion as a template, I think that would be a, I think that would be reasonable. I just do feel, you know, as, as does Bob and others, that there's, there's a good faith issue here that
Absolutely.
we ought to be dealing with, right?
Yes, and I, I too appreciate Jen's template, but I also just want us to know that even if we do use that as a model, we can't really deny on the basis of anything except zoning and, you know, our local bylaws, so.
Yeah, and these agreements, um, and can be viewed as extremely political. I know, and again, in past, past experiences, there are those who, who perhaps would like licenses to be, applications to be delayed, um, mail to be lost.
Yeah.
It, it can be really, you know, because it's a virtual monopoly type business, you just have to be very, very careful, you know, in terms of denying a host community agreement. Doesn't mean you might not have grounds for it, uh, but I don't know exactly what those are at the moment, but it, but to the extent that the board wants to know more thoroughly about an applicant before they, um, before you issue a license, I, I think that's, that's fine and I think, uh, that, that's good practice and you can certainly use that if we have another applicant at some point.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the host community agreement for Cape Way Cannabis Incorporated?
Sax, one second.
Mr. Belbin?
No.
Mrs. Bogart?
Hand up.
I, I thank Rick for the last thing you said because I feel like I'm being made to look like I'm trying to deny this host community agreement, which is not it. Okay?
No, that's not.
No, no, no. That's how I feel. I did research. I found this. I will not made to be feel like you guys, I'm not trying to say no to this. Like Bob said, this has nothing to do with the specific applicant. He was told to do something and he followed that.
Right.
Okay. And in good faith, which is a term was used up here, I can't sign something or agree to something just because I was told to because someone else messed up. Okay, I'm asking for more information on an applicant. Berlin did not create this so they could say no to people. These other towns did not create processes so they could say no. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to say no. I'm trying to say yes to something I know more about. I need to act in good faith to the people of Carver. Okay, that's where my commitment lies in every facet. I want to know as much as I can about anything that I take any vote on. So I will not be made to look like I'm trying to say no to this. I want more information on it. And as for us being at the, the top end of these boilerplate things, well, New Bedford signed an agreement where they get $25,000 upon something opening. They get 3% of gross sales. They get $50,000 or 1.5% of gross sales for a charitable, charitable contribution and that's higher of the two amounts. That charitable contribution goes up another $50,000 if gross sales is 2.5 million. It goes up another $100,000 if sales reach $5 million. In Brookline, they get $100,000 within the first five days of opening to be applied to that 3% community impact fee. They require a police officer and an attendant onsite for traffic and parking needs at the expense of the applicant. Montague and Provincetown have in their agreements commitments to 150 and 100, uh, community service hours. Um, in Montague, it's 150 service hours for community meetings, community service like educational programs, substance abuse, senior assistant, community cleanup or veterans assistant. And Provincetown has a similar thing. So when we're saying we're just getting like the upper end of everything, maybe that's the upper end of what we're getting around here. But other places are getting different things. And I'm not saying we need to get everything all these people got, but I'm not comfortable just taking what I'm given and saying, okay, that was good. We should look at what these other towns are doing and see, is there anything good for Carver? So please do not, and as you're going to quote me in the paper, Catherine, please don't make it seem like I'm trying to say no to this. I want to make the most informed decision possible and I was inspired by what other towns are doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. And I, I too would like to assure you that I personally am working only in the interest of the residents, not in the interest of a, of a business. Um, but I know that there are certain things that we can and can't do. And given that we've held up the applicant this long, um, I, I do personally think there's an issue of fairness. Um, and I think your suggestions are something that we should use going forward for sure. Is, is, Mr. Belbin?
I, I have to say, I kind of take offense because we were, we, we, as the board of selectmen here, haven't held up the applicant at all. Uh, we, we've done our due diligence when we got this application before us. Okay, so I want to make it perfectly clear. It wasn't us.
I, I understand. I meant to, to say that in a passive voice. The applicant has been held up. Wasn't necessarily by us. I, you're absolutely correct.
And I want to thank Jen for what she's been doing, uh, researching this because it's very important. And I think, like I said, we, we have what we have.
Yep.
And.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin.
I, I just have a quick question.
Mr. Hoffman?
Maybe Rick, maybe you can answer this. When, when a host agreement is brought before a board, would, wouldn't they, wouldn't the applicant first check with conservation and zoning to make sure that's location is appropriate before a host agreement is brought forth?
Yes.
The only reason I'm asking that is because I don't, I, I understand what Bob's saying, but we don't have to be the first person. I mean, the host agreement doesn't come first. Don't they have to first?
Well, they have to know that they have, when they come to for a, a host community agreement, they're supposed to have a location.
Correct.
You, you can't come in as an investor group and say, we want a host community agreement. You have to have a location. It obviously has to meet the zoning requirements, um, and, you know, but they don't actually go through a permitting process until they have a host community agreement. Um, like in this case, uh, it's very expensive to go through the permitting process. It's not expensive to get to a host community agreement. Um, it's after the host community agreement where, again, the heavy permitting begins and that's where usually a lot of money is spent. But when they come in the door, they have to have a location, uh, that meets the zoning requirements or don't even come in the door.
So the permitting process has already been done before this came to us?
Well, the permitting process has begun. They've already gone through the conservation commission, um, for, um, to, whether you needed a notice of intent, I read, I, no, they had to, actually, I think they purchased a, a church down there to give them enough buffer to meet the conservation requirements. So that had already been done, uh, certainly before it came to me and came to us. Um, and the, uh, they had already begun the permitting process with the planning board. At this point, it's, uh, just in the technical review stage. I do believe that there's a hearing scheduled for early December with the planning board. So these things had already been, uh, in motion before, before it got to us. So, so, you know, whether it, it, obviously that's not the way it's supposed to happen. The only thing that should have to happen before it comes to this board is a location that's appropriate based upon zoning. And then whatever other information they choose to give, but that's, that's where it starts for the, for this board.
Okay, and that's more for future, future, or it's not for this, as we said before, the applicant's been held up long enough by the process. And just more of a FYI for myself and our other members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I will entertain a motion to, um, approve the host community agreement for Cape Way Cannabis Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, um, uh, this is all like our boilerplate pending all permits and, um, zoning, conservation, um, health, police, fire.
Taxes paid.
Taxes paid, the whole nine yards, correct?
Yes, always. That is correct. Now the, in terms of, you know, the public safety and traffic issues, those are, those are with the permitting process with the planning board. So, so without that, they, they don't go anywhere.
Correct. And, um, the only other thing is that we get a copy of the, um, permitting applications with the state, that we get a copy of those?
Certainly.
Pages and pages and pages of documents. You can email them to us. It'll be easier.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Just quickly, I, I just, um, I want to really thank Ms. Bogart for all the work she's done by reaching out to the other communities, um, and finding out that information. And I, I, I think at some point, we should perhaps put together a subcommittee to review future host agreements and I'd like to make sure that Ms. Bogart is always part of that committee. So, just my suggestion.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, Mr. Townsend. I concur. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Okay, the, the agreement has passed four to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Uh, discussion and possible vote on the social media code of conduct slash policy slash guidelines. I think that was Jen's word. It got left out here. Sorry about that. Uh, as revised by town council. Um, I believe we have that one first. It's, it's pretty short. And then we have a boilerplate social media policy. These were all sent to us by Mr. Corbo and then we have a specific one for the town. These were all sent to us by Mr. Corbo, and then we have a specific one for the town. Does someone want to make a motion for purpose of discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? For the purposes of discussion? So you don't want to discuss this? So the board does not want to discuss the social, the social media code of conduct? Is that the case?
I'll second it, the discussion.
No discussion?
All right, I'll jump in again.
Yes, Jen.
On a roll. Number one, we request board members take responsibility for the comments they allow and enforce civility. How are we going to enforce it if it's online? I think maybe encourage is a better word, since it's used in the next phrase.
I agree.
And then I would just want to confirm that this does not inhibit or interfere with anyone's First Amendment rights, and that it's not enforceable. This does not take away anyone's First Amendment rights in any capacity.
Actually, Mrs. Bogart, why don't we add that sentence under number one? Please be advised that this policy does not in any way take away anyone's First Amendment rights.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I think it, I don't think, obviously, it doesn't, or town council wouldn't have allowed it, but it doesn't hurt to say it right out front.
I guess I have a question on that also.
Mr. Hoffman.
So by adding that line with, with number one, say if someone posts something on Facebook, or social media, I should say, and it's used to abuse others, is that their First Amendment, that they can abuse others on social media?
Well, you know, that's the, that's the problem with this, because according to all kinds of organizations, ACLU, various places, and probably our legal counsel would agree that they have the right to do that, what we're asking people is to, please be responsible and, and don't do that. Please, be nice. But we can't stop people from saying things, and we can't, can't enforce this. And I, I agree that that word enforce should be removed. I don't know if that was very helpful, but, I mean...
I, I guess I'm, I'm a little, oh, I'm kind of torn on this issue, because on one point, you do want to let people, you know, have the First Amendment, they can say what they like, but as a member of the select board, you should also, I feel as well, be held to a higher standard, maybe? Because we are an elected official, the town has elected us, the voters have elected us, that we should, and again, I know it's not enforceable, but it's almost a given that we should be above a lot of this petty things that's, that go on in social media.
Right.
And that's why I have concerns, because I know the first comeback is, it's, it's my First Amendment, I can say and do what I want, but you're also a select board member, you've been elected by the town, so you really, in good conscience, shouldn't be doing that.
Right.
But I, I have a real problem with this, and that's...
I do too, Jim. I mean, and, you know, ironically, this, this particular code, as well as all the other ones, were not actually written by anyone on the select board. They were presented to us in days past. So, I mean, I think it's good for us to be recommending this type of behavior.
I'm, I'm not against us having a social media...
But to also understand that we can't, like I said, we can't enforce it, we can't really tell people what they can and can't say. And this is probably as much for us as for anyone, so that we know as select board members that we are maybe held to a higher standard.
Right. I'm, I'm not against a code of, a social media code of conduct. I think, and I think Jen might have brought up a few meetings ago, that you would think we wouldn't need it, and I'm not just saying this board, any board wouldn't need it, but the way social media is now, you do need it.
Yeah.
Where I know it's not enforceable, but then again, you have to have some type of guideline. I just, I don't know, I, social media is just a whole nother issue that's far beyond us, but I, I just don't like when you see things on social media that attack people, and the one response is, it's First Amendment, I can say and do what I want. That's, that's not right. But again, that's, I guess that's another discussion for another day.
No, those are good points.
Okay.
Mr. Belbin.
All right, so, couple of things here, okay? I, I'm against the whole social media, I just turned around and said, I don't think we need a policy at all, period, because these are all suggestions, and you can suggest anything you want, unless it's against the law, then, then you have something to say about it. All right? How do you, how does we enforce this? We don't. As elected members, the only way it's enforced is by the voters. The voters will enforce it. If they don't like what you're doing or what you're saying, they're not going to vote for you again. Okay? That's how it's enforced. So my whole feeling is, this is worthless, to be totally honest. Okay? The other thing that we got for information here, my feeling that there is a difference here, that when you're at work, that you have to comply with a policy, because you're an employee, and that's what I think we got here, is a social media policy here from town council.
That's the boilerplate one you're talking about?
The boilerplate one here from town council, which covers all employees while they're on work, and when they're not on work, here. So that one, I have a whole new ballgame for us as the board of selectmen here, that we shouldn't be covered under this, period.
Okay.
All right? So I think that's trash too, for us, with the discussions that we have here now.
Because that's a different topic?
Total different topic.
Okay.
All right? So my feeling is, is we don't need a code of conduct policy, period, cut and dry, and we are beholden to our constituents when we go to an election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you. I guess I agree with a lot of what's been said. I agree with Mr. Belbin to a point that, you know, none of this is enforceable, but I agree with Mr. Hoffman, that I think it's important to have guidelines. And I, I, I do think that it really comes down to just having respect, having respect for the town, having respect for each other, and ultimately, this is, this is unenforceable. There's no enforcement mechanism in here, nor should, nor should there be, but I think it's important to have, have written guidelines that, that we can put out to the public, that we endeavor to follow, and I think it's important that we just, we all show respect, which I think we do, but I think it's important that, I think it's all about respect, and I think it's important for all of us to just follow those guidelines. My thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mrs. Bogart, did you want to follow up? You had some detailed things you had started with. Did you want to have anything else to say?
What can I say about this? Just the, okay, you want me to talk some more? Okay.
Well, no, I mean...
All right, let's go, guys.
You were, you wanted to get rid of the word, and, you know, enforce.
Yeah, well, I think enforce should be replaced, but, okay, so turn number two.
Excuse me, was there anything else?
I agree with Bob, that something that's just a guideline, it's not enforceable, okay, it's, I think it's unnecessary. I see Jim and Mark's point too, about how you just kind of want to, you, you want to encourage people to behave well. But this is kind of a, you know, so you say, no, you don't need this, because it really is unenforceable, and I don't think we need to be told be nice, but then, if we don't support this, people are going to come at you and say, look, she doesn't support that, she has no ethics, she thinks, you know, just whatever can happen. So it, it's like a win-win, lose-lose type deal. So, I mean, in my opinion, if, if you can't enforce it, why, it's just another piece of paper, it's going to get lost at town hall. Wow, that was blunt.
No, that's, that's, that's fine.
I just see her over there.
No, Elaine takes offense to that comment.
Okay, I apologize.
Elaine doesn't lose anything at town hall.
I rescind that. I, like I said, I'm, I'm on a roll over here, Elaine, you just come get me.
Mr. Avan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, is that all the discussion then? Is, well, I think we had, we need a motion in the second. All those in favor of adopting this with the two changes that Jen made, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
The noes habit. Two, three. Oh.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
That means that the changes haven't been made, or that you have eliminated the policy?
It means we're not adopting the social media policy.
Okay, so, all right, just want to make sure for the, for the minute, so there is no social media policy of the board?
As of now, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
Like, at all, not just with us?
Yes, at all.
At all.
That was, I believe that was the motion. The motion was to adopt this policy, and that failed, so.
Okay.
So do we have a policy now?
No, we do not.
I'm sorry.
I mean, and any board member, anyone's willing, if, if you guys want to come up with something else that you think might be more palatable...
Just so, just so we can be clear here, the motion was to adopt the changes, and it, you know, so if it is your intent to eliminate the policy, I think it would be clear if you just...
I think you're right.
If you just voted that.
I, I think we should make a second motion? If, is that what you're suggesting?
I, I think it's clearer, because we're all going to get asked questions, and we want to know exactly what the outcome is.
So we should do a second vote?
I, I would suggest if it's your intent to eliminate the policy, that you should vote to do that.
Okay.
I, I make a motion that we eliminate the social media code of conduct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
So just for clarification, so this was originally adopted in February 11th, 2014?
It was.
And then approved by the select board in 2015, January 16th meeting. So this has been in effect basically since 2015?
It has.
And now, the board looks to remove this?
Correct, that's the motion.
Madam Chair, just a, a point of discussion here.
Mr. Townsend.
The agenda says discussion and possible vote on social media code of conduct slash policy as revised by town council.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't say anything about eliminating the code of conduct in its entirety, so I just wonder if it's appropriate to vote on that tonight, and whether that should be just put on the next meeting, isn't it?
Well, you know, Mr. Townsend, you have a point, so why don't we, I'll entertain a motion to, to have that at a future meeting. Well, that's not even on the agenda. We'll have that at a future meeting, how's that? That's a good, good point. All right, so we're not adopting this particular social media policy, and we will discuss future such things in the future. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible vote on whether or not to create a select board subcommittee on town bylaw changes. I believe this item was, came from Mr. Belbin. Mr. Belbin, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we create a select board subcommittee on town bylaws to include two members of the board of selectmen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
So my, my intent on this is to go through our town bylaws and have, go by each individual one, and have meetings on each bylaw to go forward, and anybody that has any questions, issues, suggestions for changes or whatnot, that they be made at that time. That way, it's an open and public discussion with the public to know what's going to be changed, and they have some input in those changes prior to just the board of selectmen coming with possible changes. That'd be more of a community-based oversight of our town bylaws, and make the changes that need to be done, if people want them, do them, and bring it to town meeting. But there's actually an open and upfront discussion of them.
And having said that, there's no reason why, if the town, if the select board themselves wanted to make changes to the bylaws, that we couldn't also, I mean, the public's always invited to our meeting, but we could also have a public hearing. I mean, I think you should do that for bylaw changes.
Well, you have to do that anyways, by law.
Correct.
To have a public hearing on any changes of the bylaws.
Correct, but my point is that you could do that as a full board, not just as a subcommittee. I mean, you could do it either way, but... Is there any other discussion on this?
So the subcommittee, is it just made up of the two select board members?
The two select board members, to go through them, and bring in people to discuss issues and problems as we go through our bylaw, town bylaws, that each individual article goes through, and on one date, we'll have Article One, on one date, we'll have Article Two, one date, we'll have Article Three. This will be a long process to go through, but putting it out there to people, say, hey, if you're interested in this subject, come to the meeting, discuss it for possible changes. I mean, if the town, the board wants to do that as a whole, that's fine, no problem. All right? I know there are some things in our town bylaws I would like to see changed in relationship to the board of selectmen and the town administrator. All right? But also, now, town meeting, I think we're going to need to make some changes from how the bylaw states in town meeting, which we'd need to bring in the moderator, the town clerk...
That's, that's the next item.
Right, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if we're going to change the bylaws, and we're going to start taking, let's do this in a systematic way.
So, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Hoffman, please.
So are you suggesting that the subcommittee then report to the full board?
Correct.
So that, okay, I just, I guess to what Sarah had said earlier, that maybe just the whole board can do that?
Okay.
Just another step, that's...
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mrs. Bogart.
So the membership of the committee is not just two select board members, like are you bringing in other people too, or is it just like two of us meeting and talk, like, are there other people on the committee? Or just two?
The two, the two people that are from the town select, the two select board, would be those two people that are going to gain all that information and bring it back to the board of selectmen. Okay? So each article that we go through, if it deals with the finance committee, then we go ahead and say, okay, finance committee, come on in, we're going to have a discussion about this. Or we, on the other end, is go to the finance committee's meeting, sit down and talk to them during that period of time. If it has to do with conservation, we go to conservation, or we bring conservation in to discuss that. Whatever way it works out, it works out, so we gain information that, because it's an involving document, and when things come up, it's going to have to be changed. Well, let's try to make those changes systematically.
Well, because, because you guys graciously let me be the, our representative on the zoning board, the zoning bylaw committee, which I wish was explored more, but I love that, and I think it's so important to revisit that. So I like the idea of revisiting the bylaws, and not in a, okay, let's get it ready for the next town meeting way, but in a, let's really look at this. Like, the open space and recreation plan has to be done every so often, and the master plan. So I, I like the idea of revisiting every bylaw and going through and making sure if it still works, but I like the idea, if you make it more of an official committee, like the zoning bylaw one, bring in more people, and it's going to be a long-term committee, but have discussions. I would actually like to see it be a bigger, official, long-term committee. But I like the idea of checking in with everyone to see, is it still good? Does it still work?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Townsend.
I agree with Ms. Bogarts. I, I like the, I think it's important that we, we review our bylaws on a periodic basis, but I would like to see a broader committee. I, I would like to see us perhaps reach out to the major committees in town and ask them to each send a representative to this committee, maybe even have a member of two from the public. I always like to include the public in, in everything we're doing, and I, I just would hate to see, I just don't think it should be such a small committee. I would like to see a broader committee than just a subcommittee of the board of selectmen.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Belbin and Mrs. Bogart, since you made the motion on the second, is there anyone, either one of you would like to amend that, to include more membership in this subcommittee?
Well, I definitely want him involved. I don't know if you guys would want, I would be on both, but I don't want to, like, take all the seats away, because, you know, I'm one that thinks you shouldn't be on every committee, but I love this. But I say definitely, Mr. Belbin.
Thank you.
So, is that an amendment to the motion?
So, how about we do this? I'll withdraw my motion for us to bring that to the next meeting, that way a complete list of people on different boards and committees that we can actually have to serve this, so that I'm not just jumping up and saying, I want this committee, let's really take a look at what committees really would want to be on this and to make sure that it is complete, like Mark says, and I, I intend in that motion to withdraw mine till the next meeting to create a list.
And you would like a member from each of the town boards, committees and commissions to come to our meeting?
I'd like them to ask to see if they want to be on, one person be on.
You'd like them to be asked?
Yeah, and if I could just ask Mr. Belbin to consider in your, in your proposal, including a couple of members from the general public, just a couple of public.
Yeah, and then that's a good segue into figuring out how to post the meetings, or post the openings properly and let people apply and, see you guys, we're getting there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Belbin. You got that, Mr. Lefon? Yes, okay. All right, we got that. Okay, the next item for discussion and possible vote is whether or not to have a post-mortem town meeting discussion with the select board, town moderator, town clerk, workers, attendees, to create a plan for future town meetings. Mr. Belbin, I believe this was an item that you had an interest in.
I make a motion that we have a post-mortem at a later date to have it as one separate meeting with these individuals to discuss the town meeting and possible changes, that way, uh, everyone's on the same page and any irregularities that did happen, that we can resolve those and the public's informed of how it's being done.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion?
Jim's over.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman.
Just a question, does, doesn't the town, the town moderator do a post-town meeting?
Well, here, here's the thing, um, Mr. Belbin made a point to me the other day when he asked for this to be in his select board notes and then on the agenda, that the, um, the way the moderators' association rules and regulations read, the select board is allowed to hold a post-mortem if we want to. I made my argument to Bob, um, very vehemently probably, that I felt, even though we're allowed to do that, there's lots of things we're allowed to do that don't feel right and kind of feel wrong, this one feels wrong to me, because I think if, if the town, if the, town meeting is the moderator's meeting. And I feel that if the moderator does not want to do this, doesn't want to include us, doesn't want to include anybody, he wants to just do it with whoever he wants, I mean, it's his meeting, and so, to me, for us to do something like that without his, his, joining us, it just doesn't feel right, so, but, um, you know, I like to put what my, my members want on an agenda for discussion, I think it's a good thing to do, so, that's my position frankly, I don't, I'm not personally going to put an agenda item on here, even if you guys vote that we have a post-mortem, um, I feel like it's not up to me to do that without the moderator's approval, since we're talking about his meeting, I wouldn't want him post-mortem in one of my meetings, you know, that's just my feeling, so, but anyway.
Mark DeJefries?
Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, um, I was just going to suggest that perhaps we have Mr. Lefon reach out to the town moderator and get his thoughts on it while we go forward on this.
That's a great idea. Is that? Mr. Lefon?
I'm happy to do that, if that's the board's wish.
Okay. Now, there is a motion and a second.
I have a discussion with that.
Yes, Mr. Belbin.
Okay, so, only been a selectman for a little over a year now, but a couple of town meetings and you turn around and think about this and say, well, has the selectmen that have been on this board ever been invited to a post-mortem after a town meeting by one of the moderators ever?
Well, having been here the longest, I can say that I have not, but then again, I, we've had a lot of moderators and I've never been invited, that doesn't mean they haven't had a, maybe they didn't invite me, I, I'm not offended. But it also might mean they haven't had a post-mortem, but again, that kind of goes to my point whether or not, um, and believe me, there've been some town meetings that, did not go the way I would have liked and I would have liked to, to talk to people about that, it didn't happen, so, yes.
So, I mean, and that's my point, is that although the moderator runs the meeting, all right, for town meeting, um, there's a lot of moving parts within a town meeting that need to be done, and I don't know if you guys want to take a stand on this, but if you feel that this town meeting that we had was run perfectly, no problems, issues are at, if you can stand here and say that, then I'll say, no, we don't need, need this, but, I mean, I have numerous things that happened that really needs to be resolved to make sure they don't happen again.
Okay, so Bob, I actually take offense at, at your presuming that I don't want to do this, because I think town meeting went perfectly, that don't, please don't make that assumption, I don't want to have a meeting on another person's meeting, to me, it's a procedural and a, and a respectful thing to do, it, that town moderator runs town meeting, and I, I strongly suggest we take Mr. Townsend's suggestion and just ask the town moderator if he would come and have a post-mortem with us, I mean, that's pretty straightforward.
And if he doesn't?
I think it's his prerogative, it's his meeting.
Well, then, that's where I feel that we should step forward, I, I agree, bring it out to, because I've already asked, I've already emailed him with some of the issues that I have with it, and he has stated a post-mortem in that and that the problem is there is no date associated, when it will happen, or even if we'll be invited to it, if he's going to do that on his own and whatnot. My preemptive strike here is to say, hey, let's take the bull by the horns and make sure that our town meeting is run the most effectively as possible, okay, and make sure that our bylaws are followed and.
Well, again, Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think you're implying that if, if someone is against having this meeting, if the town moderator can't be there, that means we're okay with, with a town meeting that doesn't do, where things happen that we think shouldn't happen, and that's not true, that's not the case at all. I'm, I'm not suggesting that, I think that if, if we think that the town moderator, whoever he or she is at any point in time, isn't running the meeting right, then someone needs to run against that person, that's how you change the situation. And we can't go back and change town meeting, if, if we think that one of us isn't, you know, behaving the way we should, then someone should run against us. I don't know, that's, that's just my feeling, Mr. Hoffman?
Sarah, I agree with what you're saying, is everybody has their job and their, I've got a term, stay in the lane type thing, that this isn't part of our jurisdiction, the town meeting is, is run by the moderator, and Bob, if you did have issues, I'm glad you did speak to him, and so he now knows you have issues and if he does have a post-mortem, hopefully he will include you in that. I, I just think that, like Sarah said, I, stepping on other people's toes, it's, I'd be offended if someone tried to do that to us after a meeting. So, I just concur with what Sarah was saying.
Madam, Madam Chairman?
Oh, certainly, Mr. Townsend.
Just, just one, one quick point, not, not only does the town moderator run town meeting, the town moderator is elected by the people of Carver to run town meeting, he's, he's an elected official, and, and I just, I, I understand concerns, but I, I just think we should reach out to the town moderator and, and, and get his thoughts before we do anything as a board.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
May I have a turn?
Mrs. Bogart.
I agree with Mark that maybe we shouldn't take the lead on this, but I agree with Bob that I would like to see this happen, and it's not even in relation to the most recent town meeting, but in my opinion and my past professional life, it's always been a good idea to just kind of recap events after it's done, like I used to work in, in event planning, we have a giant event, okay, we're going to circle up later and talk about what worked, what didn't work. So, with these, the moderator, the town clerk, workers, attendees, like, personally, I'd like to know, hey, town clerk, what was good for you, what wasn't good? Maybe there's something we as the select board could do to make things better for the town clerk, the workers, the people who were checking people in, the counters, if there's anything that I can do as a board member to help them make town meeting run better, I want to do it, so, and I would, I would like to impress upon the moderator that I would love to see this happen, because personally, I would want to know what worked and what didn't work, just a summary, but it is his meeting, I would just like to see him do it.
And, and, you know, I, I would too, I, I, I don't think it's any question, I think it would be very interesting to do that and, um, so, okay.
So, is, so the question, I think we all agree, we'd like to have that type of meeting, I think it's up to the town moderator to have that?
Mm-hmm.
So, this motion that's brought before us is to have the select board have this meeting with the town administrator, town clerk, all the work.
That was Mr. Belbin's motion, correct.
So, is, is that what your intention, Bob, is to have us basically call this meeting and include everybody that's listed on this?
Yes, that, that was my intent, is to do it, because I don't, I don't know if he's going to have one or not, all right, but from my impression of this town meeting, and I'm just going on this town meeting, that things happened on the whole, from when you walk through the door and you get in here and you leave, I think that processes could be done better, okay, that you can always improve on something, and if something went wrong, you turn around and say, okay, how do we not do this again? And, I mean, even in the military, after we did assignments and we went out there and completed them, we go back, we sit down, we all talk about what happened, okay? What did you do, what did you do, what did you do, okay? Why didn't you do this, why didn't you do that? We ask those questions and to say, hey, okay, fine, let's try it again, do it again, do it better, all right? So, if you don't know what's broke and you're not going to fix it, it's just going to happen again, and we don't want that to happen again, we want to make sure what happens is done the right way and that everyone has what they need to do their jobs, and we all follow the same rules that are put, so, in a post-mortem like this, like I said, I haven't heard one of being done here in Carver, but I think it's a really good exercise that will open the eyes that we want to be a progressive town and how we be progressive if we look at things that go on and how we can make them better. That's my goal, is not to tear people down here, but to turn around and, hey, let's do it better next time, so it doesn't happen again.
Okay.
One last thing, one, one suggestion.
Mrs. Bogart.
Okay, so I think we all, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we'd all like to kind of see something like this happen, but my feeling is that the majority of us don't want us to be the planners and say, it's happening now and when, so maybe in Rick's email to the moderator, he could say, you know, the select board discussed and they would like to see a post-mortem happen, you know, would you schedule one or are you interested in scheduling on, so, put the ball in his court, but let him know that we would like to see it happen.
Right.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, that's the sense that I, that I get as well.
So, I'll withdraw my motion, all right, and allow Rick to do his job.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Belbin.
Whatever I can do for you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Lefon, very good. All right, um, last item and then I'm going to call for a short break here, discussion and possible vote on a standard posting practice for giving notice to the public that there are openings on boards, commissions and committees. Mr. Townsend, I believe this was something you were particularly interested in, would you want to start us off?
It was, thank you, Madam Chair. This came to light to me, oh, a couple of meetings ago, when I, I forget what the position was, but there was a position that we were discussing, appointing someone to, and there was some discussion about whether it had been posted, how long it had been posted, and, uh, I just think that going forward, it would be a good practice for the town to have some type of minimum posting of a, of a board or committee membership before we appoint, appoint somebody.
Okay, now, you mean in terms of timeline or?
Yeah, a time, a timeline, yeah, I mean, perhaps a, a couple of weeks on the website, and, get, let's get it on social media, let's get a notice out to the newspaper.
Okay.
I mean, you know, just, that was just my, my thoughts, but I think we should have some, some minimum time that it's out there and available for, to get the public know before we vote somebody in, I think that would be a good idea.
Excellent. So, um, okay, so let's, um, let's see here, before we get into this too heavily, did you have a timeline in mind, two weeks, a month?
Yeah, and I, I think, I think perhaps we need some input from, from Rick or from Elaine as to what, what works for their office and, but I, I think a minimum, let's get it on the website for a couple of weeks, um, let's make sure it gets out on, on the town social media page a, a couple of times, perhaps every, every, I don't know, every Monday, every Friday, whatever, whatever works, and let's get a notice out to the newspaper that there's an opening.
Okay. So, is that your motion?
Yes, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, and newspaper would be in print and online?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, all we can do is, is send the notice to the newspaper, whether it, whether it shows up or not, that's out of our hands, but.
And that would be a public service announcement, right?
Yes, it would.
Just checking.
We have a, an ongoing list of vacancies, so I think it would be just as easy for us to, to forward those.
Sure.
And again, on a, on a regular basis, and I agree, I think two weeks, 14 days is, I've seen that as a fairly standard, unless there's some sort of emergency of sorts, but I, hard to envision what that may be.
Right, and, and just so I'm clear, the only reason I mention that, whether it gets into the paper or not, I just don't want to see it held up, because for some reason it didn't happen to get into the printed edition of the paper.
Well, that's why I suggested that when it goes to the paper, it says in print and online, you know, because that, that technically, that usually goes up pretty immediately, whereas you're right, the paper's once a week, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim, so the motion is to have a timeline of about two weeks' notice, um, posting, getting notice to the public about openings on boards, commissions and committees to be posted on the town website, and that would be on the select board page, is that correct?
Well, I'd like to see it on the main website, you know, when you, when you first go to the website, if you could get some kind of.
Okay, because we announce it as being on our page.
Well, and we could do both, but I think, you know, people don't always make it to, to our page, they might make it for the general board and committee list, but if there's something new available, they might have to make to go to our page.
No, I think that's a good idea, both pages, okay, and then the town's Facebook page, maybe once a week?
Once a week, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Lefon?
No, I just wanted to point out that right now, on the selectmen's page, the, on Facebook page, it does direct people to our website for, to list the vacancies, but we could just put that on the, you know, the homepage, rather than seeing them having to go and find it.
Yep.
That might be a little bit, little bit easier to do that.
And again, I'm just talking for, for new, new, new appointments, new, new vacancies, not ongoing, but if something.
There's nothing, well, your motion is to, for all boards, so I think it should be for ongoing, I mean, everything.
Yep, no, that's, and that's my intent.
Yeah. Right, and so that would be as well as the, on the newspaper, print and online, is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion made in second, any further discussion?
Jen?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bogart.
Always, well, like, right now, on the website, on, under Town News, it actually has that the RDA is seeking two members, like, right now, so there's already two headlines on it, so I think it would be nice to see that consistently with openings, and as much as we bragged on social media before, I think Mark's right, it's got to be on there, but I would like to see it done in a more regular basis, so it goes on the town social media page, but then I think that needs to be shared to the two big town pages, Everything Carver and Carver Helping Carver, at least a couple of times a week, if we're only giving people a two-week deadline and it's only on the town Facebook page twice in those two weeks, no one's going to see that, that's like.
Actually, there are three town pages, Carver Helping Carver, Everything Carver and Fair and Open Government and Carver.
Okay, so let's, let's put it there, if, if it's a two-week application period, we'll call it, then I think it needs to be shared on those three pages and the town page at least twice a week, because people need to find out about it and then have time to apply.
These positions are there constantly, you know, I mean, they're on the website all the time with a reference to, on our social media page to, to see the website, so, they're, they're always there, it's not like, you know.
I meant the new, like, if a new one is created or if there's a new opening, get those out like once or twice a week, but then the, you know, the whole giant list, yeah, every once in a while, remind people, but if there's something new, let's get that. people, but if there's something new, let's get that out there.
Okay. Let me ask you, Mr. LeFond and Mrs. Weston, is this going to be particularly onerous to do?
I defer to Mrs. Weston on that.
Not that I don't think you're perfectly capable, I just know you don't have a lot to do.
It's definitely something we could do, absolutely. I think each week is different in our office, it's hard to predict that. You know, as long as that's okay. But some weeks, it might be once, some weeks, we might be able to, to do that a few times. And sometimes we might miss a week. And as long as that's okay, we're, we'll try to be as consistent as we can, of course.
Okay.
I don't see that being an issue.
And I, I think that, we're just talking about a minimum here. That, that's all. I mean, it could be more. And, and just, point of clarification, Madam Chair, the reason I just mentioned Facebook in general and not the various groups in town, is because it's, these groups sometimes come and go, there's more groups, and it's tough to, I don't want to specify which groups they go into and which ones they don't, because you could have more groups come, more groups go, and I think that's difficult. That's why I just left it as generic social media, that's all.
That's true.
And those, the only town site is our own Facebook site, so these other social media groups that are private groups, obviously, we can't, you know, we can't compel anybody else to post, you know, on their own social media pages, our vacancies.
Well, that's, that's a good point. So, to that point, Mrs. Bogart?
I mean, those social media pages could pick up off our Facebook page if they chose to, though.
And to that point, we as Select Board members, I guess, could actually share it to our...
Yes, we could.
You know, our favorite sites or whatever, that we wanted, that, that's a very good point. Okay. So, we'll just drop that last little part. So, the motion has been made, and who seconded it? Bob did?
Yeah.
Mark, you made?
I made it, and I'm not sure who seconded it.
I think Mr. Belvin did.
I did.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, what are we voting, what is the exact thing?
So, the, the motion is to have the following standard practice for giving notice to the public that there are openings on boards, commissions, and committees, to have these new openings posted for two weeks before appointments are made. And they should be posted on the town website, front page, on the Select Board page, on the town's Facebook page, which we can then share if we want to, and in the newspaper, print and online. Wait, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. I'm going to ask for a short five-minute break before we get into Mr. LeFond's update. Okay, we're reconvening the Select Board meeting of November 17th. We are up to the Town Administrator update. Mr. LeFond?
Yes. Keep it reasonably short here.
Thank you.
In your packet, there's a couple pieces of information. One is, actually...
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone, Mr. LeFond? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
First page is a, a redraft of the Finance Committee bylaw that essentially incorporates the language from the current capital outlay bylaw. And so, I'm sorry, I'm working specifically for that. It's the last section, "Any registered voter of the town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee unless otherwise provided, or no member may also be an elected or appointed town officer, employee of the town, a member of any other committee, board, or commission. No member of a special town committee shall be authorized to vote as a member of such agency on any matter pertaining to the duties of a special committee of which he is a member." The, the last sentence is just a carryover, so... So, I just, you know, if the, I believe that that meets the intent of what you're seeking. It really is a duplicate of the, of the capital outlay membership clause. So, if that's the intent, you know, clean it up a little bit, but I, I think this is what you're trying to achieve here.
Okay. So, I believe the way this board settled on this last time was that you and Town Council would come up with this change, and then we might have the Finance Committee here for
Yes.
A brief discussion?
Yeah, and as, as, as long as, you know, I'm clear on, on your intention, I'll be happy to share this with the chairman, see how he wants to handle it in terms of his board, and much feedback they'd like to give us.
Okay.
I, I just want to make sure that you're, that I have captured your intent.
I'm sorry?
I just want to make sure that I've captured your intent, that's all.
I, I think it certainly, in my opinion, catches, catches the intent of the original, but in much more clear language. Any other thoughts from board members? Quickly, Mr. Hoffman?
One of the things, Rick, on the Council on Aging on 4.4,
Yes.
Which says, "Upon the effective date of this bylaw, the appointed incumbents serving at the time of the adoption shall continue to serve for the remainder of their terms." Can we include that, would you think? So, so this way, we don't...
Certainly, yes. I think that's a good idea. Any of those, you know, transitional provisions are always...
Rick, so I don't think the intent is for every, and if they're already on the board, let them serve their term on either board, then they can decide which, what they'd like to do.
Right. Like they did with the Select Board article.
Right, exactly.
Yes. Okay. So, we can add that transitional provision.
Any other thoughts from board members?
If I could also just point out too, and that 4.3.7, there was also a limitation on membership on the Council on Aging, similar to the Finance Committee, and that is removed, as you can see. There's, I'm not sure why that was the case, but looking at that, and also, there's a, there was also included in the Council on Aging bylaw was a statement that they could appoint clerks and others. Well, that's obsolete, because that went away, you know, back in the 90s, when the Town Administrator bylaw came into play. And it's never been, you know, it's never been utilized as it was in the, in the old bylaw. So, between that and the language on the, you know, that was incorporated into the Finance Committee bylaw, these probably go back a generation. And I'm not sure what the intent was. Like anything, any bylaw is an intent of what's going on at that point in time. So, I think this, this kind of captures, cleans up the COA a little bit, even though it wasn't really necessary in the bylaw itself, but to the extent that the language and the eligibility provision of the Finance Committee bylaw, you know, handcuffed COA, it didn't make much sense.
Right.
So, as I said, if, if this is your, you know, if you believe that this captures your intent, we'll add a transitional provision, and I'll send it up to Greg for a quick review, if that's what you'd like. Presuming that that's okay with Greg, or any minor amendments, or, then I'll also presume to send it to the Finance Committee for their deliberation and feedback.
That sounds good to me. Any other comments from anyone? Mrs. Bogart?
In, like, 4.3.7, I just want to make sure that the Finance Committee still has the ability to appoint someone to a subcommittee, like, like if we vote to form the
Yes.
Bylaw committee. Let's just make sure that it's clear that someone from the Finance Committee can be on that if they're appointed by their own board to serve on that.
Right. And I agree that that should be, I'm not sure if that's inherent, but...
Right.
To make that clear, because I would agree that there are many, or certainly several committees in town to which, you know, multiple boards and committees provide membership.
Yeah.
So, by virtue of your position on one board, you are...
Right.
So, okay, we'll make, make a note of that to make sure that we...
And then just one thing, I, maybe I'm missing something, but what, what Jim, the 4.4.2, the, upon effective of this bylaw, the appointed incumbents, what is this changing of the COA? Is, is something changing where their incumbents serve? What, what is this? What's changing on their end? I didn't understand.
I'm sorry, what, what section you are?
4.4.2, under the Council on Aging.
No, that hasn't changed at all.
Can you just explain with, like...
That hasn't changed.
But what, what is it, upon the effective date of this bylaw, the appointed incumbents serving at the time shall continue to serve for the remainder of their terms?
That's...
Why wouldn't they be allowed to serve for the remainder of their terms?
That's, I think, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. LeFond, but I think that when this was first adopted, maybe a generation ago, like, like when they adopt, how many adopted the bylaw that said you couldn't be a town employee and a Select Board member, there were two of us serving as Select Board members.
Okay.
And we were allowed to serve out our term.
So, can we get rid of that?
That's, I will be happy to do that.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, and there's a typo in 4.4.6, third from the last word. It says, "Set five fourth year in." Sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Well, that was a cut and paste job, so you can't blame me for that one, Jen. Okay.
Very good.
All right.
So, everyone is set then for letting the Finance Committee take a look at this?
Right.
And I don't know that we necessarily need to meet with them. If they want to, that's fine, but they could also send their comments back to us, and if they don't, they may feel like they have too many meetings, I don't want to...
Well, they might put this on their next agenda, and I attend their meetings anyway, so if they have any feedback, they'll...
Okay, that, that would be great.
Willing to.
Mr. Belvin?
Can we also send this to the Council on Aging and have them look at theirs too? Not just the Finance Committee, but the Council on Aging too?
Yes, I'll do that, Bob. Yes, certainly.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Okay, Mr. LeFond, please, continue.
Okay. Let me, let me get my bearings here.
Sorry?
Not, not at all. I'm looking for the next document, which... Okay. Yeah, I had sent out the next document, which was actually a draft of the changes to the Select Board bylaw with regard to membership...
Right.
On other committees, and I, I sent that out via email today, and I'm sorry if, if you did not get that.
Well, that's all right, we, we can...
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, if you didn't get it, I think it's best to, all I did was identified that members of the board should not be part of any other, should be part of a special, you know, permitting authority, and I laid those out for you. So, maybe if we put this off to the next meeting, to make sure everybody has a chance to look at that, so I...
Okay. No, that's fine. No problem.
And while we're at that, why don't we do the same for the code of conduct piece too? So, having drafted that, I want to make sure. I think I'll, I'll redraft that and maybe share it with the chair first, so that we don't have this conversation...
Okay.
Six more times. So, again, I apologize for not getting that to you.
That's all right. Let me also suggest that the Select Board Code of Conduct, I think it was discussed to one of our previous meetings, that we, some of us, anyway, wanted it to be called Guidelines rather than, I know Mrs. Bogart did, and...
Yes.
So, maybe we can consider that as well. Okay.
Okay. Now, the, the last thing here is, as of right now, I think we're all reasonably aware of what we steal in terms of the governor's orders, which I know he's speaking in Thursday, so that, his orders may change, but they're probably not going to get any more lenient. But at Town Hall, what we've been doing, what we did last week, is we did have somebody in the foyer almost, almost all the time. We were borrowing staff from various offices for short periods of time, so that no particular office was, was unduly impacted. And we were monitoring the traffic, logging the traffic, making sure people had masks on. One of the things that we did come to the conclusion was that, other than boards, members of the staff, boards and committees, there, there, there really, other than in the morning, there really wasn't a lot of foot traffic.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I said, "Other than in the mornings, there really wasn't a lot of foot traffic for visitors."
Oh, okay.
And even then, it was a little sparse. And I think that's been the case really since March. I don't, I don't think it's a matter of people just not liking us at Town Hall, I think it's just a matter of that, that's the time and place we're in. So, beginning today, we decided that that really wasn't an exercise that was of any value. Doesn't mean we won't do it again if we feel it's necessary. But we are strictly enforcing the use of ma, of masks, not just in, you know, the hallways, but also in offices, unless it's someone's personal workspace.
Okay.
For instance, in the broader, you know, the Selectman's Office, you know, that, and I know members, I certainly know the members of this board have been, you know, for months have been very strict about that themselves. But in that location, we need to be wearing masks. When people are in their private offices, that, that's different, so, and that's, people have been doing a pretty good job at that to date. So, we'll see what we, where, where it goes here in terms of, you know, staffing. We have encouraged, we do have some equipment, they, we, we got through the CARES Act so that, to help with remote, working from home for some people. For some people, that's not really that, it doesn't work very well, but, so, we've asked department heads to think about what, what some of their staff may be able to do remotely or from home themselves, to try to minimize the number of people in Town Hall. So, this, this is something that, again, it's fairly new. I, I, having surveyed, one of the things we do, us, Town Administrator walks, is we kind of have had this ongoing surveys of what other towns are doing. And there, I think we're somewhat in the minority still by having our, our facilities, our Town Hall open, regular business hours still. I think for the most part, libraries are either closed or restricted. As you know, ours is still open on restricted times, same with our COA. So, I, I think we're, we're trying our best to, you know, to, to maintain our services here and our buildings, and the information we're gathering from other communities shows that. Until such time that the governor may, may order stricter provisions that we're required to, to deal with, you know, our goal is to keep the buildings open as, as long as we can. If there's additional safety precautions that, that can be suggested, we're more than happy to, to take a look at that. I have had, you know, multiple conversations with the Health Agent, had a, on the phone, myself and Kevin and the Chairman of the Board of Health last week discussing this, and I think we're all on the same page at this point, that we're doing what we can in a reasonable fashion. So, should that change, we'll, we'll obviously let you know. And again, if anybody has suggestions you'd like to offer, we're more than happy to consider those too.
Great. Thank you, Mr. LeFond. Okay. We've done, gone through the minutes, except for the ones that were tabled, and all the requests for fishing tournaments. Select Board and Community announcements. Does anyone have any community announcements this time? Mr. Belvin?
Just, I'm taking it off from our, our wonderful town website. There's a recording secretary position that's open. Please come to the Town Hall, and you can go online, take a look at the application process, and then there's also a GATRA driver position also available. So, if you're looking for a job, take a look. available, so if you're looking for a job, take a look, so every now and then, this gets updated, and when positions are available, go ahead and apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin, anyone else?
Oh, wait, I got one.
Mrs. Bogart?
I don't think we're meeting before next Thursday, so finally I got to do a fun one, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. You guys always do the fun ones.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else? I do have another one, on Saturday, November 28th, at 10:00 a.m., the Conservation Land Committee is hosting a Walk Off the Stuffing Walk, so that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and we're meeting at Savory Avenue. This is basically just an invitation to get outdoors, the committee's done a lot of the preliminary work out there, making the pathway, the walking trail actually visible to the public, on all three openings, entrances, and this is just a way for us to show the public what we've got, it's a relatively easy trail to walk, and when we've done that one, we will offer a guide to the two other conservation land trails that have not been cleared as well yet, just to give people an idea that they're here, here's what we're planning to do, and for those people who want to, it's an opportunity for them to give us suggestions or sign up to help. But this is purely a fun walk, it's, and everyone's invited, it's posted on the town website, I believe it's the front page, it's posted on the Conservation Land ad hoc committee's page, it's up on Facebook all over the place, I know it's on mine, and we're just telling people, if you have kids, bring the kids, bring water, bring masks and sturdy shoes.
Is it in the town Facebook page?
I don't, yeah, it's in the town's Facebook page, it was posted today, as well as on our own...
When is that, Sarah?
That is Saturday, November 28th, 10:00 a.m., that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and that's why we're calling it Walk Off the Stuffing Walk. So we hope to see, and you're all invited too, so that is that. Moving along to the select board notes, Mr. Townsend, I believe you had one?
Yeah, I just, I think at a future meeting, it would be good, perhaps even, Rick, just in your town administrator updates, to get an update on the North Harbor Development Project and the whole grant process of, we have two new members since that all, whole grant was awarded, so might be a good idea at some point to get an update on that.
We will do that, in fact, the RDA met last week, and I was fortunate to be able to be there, and the proponent was in and did a pretty good update, and my thought was, it would really be, I think, optimal if we could actually get the proponent in and speak to this board, I think, obviously, nobody's in a better position to give you the update. I know I learned a lot, obviously not having a tremendous background in this particular issue, so, so if, I think that would be the best, without taking up too much time, but I assume in, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes, you get a pretty, pretty good update.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Be great, thank you, Mr. Townsend. I had three items, now the first two, the first one is update on Plymouth Street Waterline Extension, I know you did just talk with us about this on an agenda not too long ago, Mr. Lefan, and so this would only be necessary if there's any new information, sometimes these permitting processes take a while, but then suddenly something good happens, so we'd just like to know about it, if that's the case. And the update on the proposed Silver Street Site project, again, only if anything has changed, we understand now they are not, they have decided not to extend the waterline down to Silver Street, but again, that can change, because they don't have a, they have not filed set plans yet. And the last one is an update on work with, the work we're doing with SERPED, specifically the Open Space and Recreation Plan, that Jen also mentioned, Rick and I met with a representative from SERPED and the town planner on Monday, just Monday morning, and we went over some broad, broad strokes, what is going to happen, SERPED is going to help us a great deal to get this thing updated, and of course, the main reason to update it, not only is it a good idea for the town to have a roadmap in terms of what they want to protect and what they want to do going forward for these topics, but if we don't have an updated plan, we're not eligible for state funding, if, should another property, like the coal property, come to the town, so we can cover that at a future meeting too. Okay, I will take, intonate a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
When's our next meeting?
December 12th, thank you, Jen.
Wait, 12?
One, sorry. I'm sorry, you are so right. Next meeting is December the 1st, thank you, Mrs. Bogart.
At 7?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, motions and manate and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you all.